All right, we are going to go ahead and get started now before the county and town council write in the meetings of July 12. We will start with the plan of the movement.
I further encourage you to arrive at the United States of America. In the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If it does come with the board, I'd like to hold off on the proclamation question just to see if anyone else is in the charge to write before him. So if they have a right to. So first up is the item for our.
You just, I'm amazed July is Parker and Recreation's month. And B is, I mean, it's Parker Recreation Special Day. So on Friday, July 15. And that's just acknowledging the special word.
Next up, our public comment. This is the end of the public meeting on and then the items of three minutes. And it's in the I will only give a such as for every time and public hearing items is only be addressed during the public hearing. It's the way we make a public comment is being, and then it's going to be explained in the next part of the next. So now it's one public comment.
I'm not seeing anybody in chat asking or raising their hand or seeing questions.
All right. Well, in fact, we will. We are going to hold off on our proclamation for a little while. Getting out of the church today again. So we'll move on to ordinances and regulations. Part A is the specialty permit, which is not the last meeting number 2022-1. Anyone who has a birthday any time, and I believe for you have an update to some forward with me.
And through the big major members of the board, I'm talking to this lawyer, I believe, after coming in the new playing director. Please review me I am normally very loud and just giving another wrong items. Try to be as loud as possible during his speaking. So I did want to update you about this case. The public hearing for this case was down from June 27th, 2022. On July 16th, the applicant submitted a revision to the previously submitted by the new permanent request to make your belt of the plan to remove the requested wall and wall sign in the southwest corner of the intersection of New Russian Drive and Avenue. And that is identified as always, but it's question number 175-823. So the original supplemental included a wall sign at each corner of the southern side of the intersection of New Russian Drive and along with the bell tower at the median along North and South Avenue. And that was not included in the original package, again, that was part of each side of the downtown. Applicant has said semantic difference, so only include the one wall sign and the south football ball. On the person that was stated on the southeast corner of the area section, which is Carson 1152. And he also pushed the bell tower in a proposed application that would be in your application. So this was included in your packet. And basically, it just shows the bobbled area in Raleigh, how I did for the original. And getting that section and that part, you will make from the application. So this bracket was also included in your original packet. And I just wanted to show before you begin, so you can actually see what that is requesting. That one wall sign on the left side of the seven six bell towers. So what are the other areas? Please keep in mind that you have those especially to expand a major level of plan to consider. At the previous meeting on June 27th, the town attorney stated that you could include, I heard quite a few cases from innocent children if you wish to choose them. Including in your packet some recommended language from staff to why the project might need those to find that straight in front of you. They still could utilize a little bit more.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
So there's no chance you could use one side of the measure of one wall. Bell tower cases.
Notes into the three to the five of the permit as well as the change in development. With the change. Also, all in favor, say aye. So motion theory. All right, well, we're going to go back to our proclamation. So for those of you who do not know, Elon First Baptist Church is celebrating their 100th anniversary. So we wanted to make sure that that was documented and celebrated in whatever way that we could. I would encourage everyone to find their information on Facebook or their website to learn more about the church and all that they've done in the community. But I will be reading the proclamation today. But beforehand, I just want to ask that members of the church, if you would like to stand and be recognized, I would love to take advantage. So we have Reverend Maria Wainfield, and we also have our former founder, Egon Paulmann, as well as make them more like my husband's theme. So it's interesting, but one we've been told about. Vacation, you know, celebrate 100 years. So we're very happy that we were able to kind of think like that. And I will be in church on August the 7th to formally. I agree with proclamation, which is from the 20th of August, 7th, 2022, as Elon First Baptist Church Day. So we are at John McMillan, a former slave, and that was Elon First Baptist Church in 1922, as the first African American church built in town of Elon, North Carolina. And whereas Elon First Baptist Church has served a place of worship for several generations, their family, and far. Determined to make a difference for good news and good work. And whereas Elon First Baptist Church is in its current building on Lynch Street, stands as a symbol of the town historically hot community. And whereas this year, 2022, marks the 100th anniversary of Elon First Baptist Church, is documented as much today as it was in 1922. To help our community and to be a good neighbor to their community. Now therefore, to recognize the memory of the 100th anniversary of Elon First Baptist Church, I am in charge there at the town of Elon, North Carolina, here by proclaiming August 7th, 2022, as Elon First Baptist Church Day. Thank you all so much and congratulations. Oh, thank you. There's my community services. So thank you all for coming to be here. Welcome this day. This is awesome. All right, so moving back to ordinances and regulations. Thank you all for allowing me to kind of go out of order here. So we have our indemnifying case number 2022-24. So one of the things that I wanted to be sure and go for a summary about is that we had a really great filling hearing a couple of weeks ago on this topic. So I want to thank everyone coming in here a couple of weeks ago as well as today. I think that it's really important to have that feedback and probably one of our ways to pack houses. So that's always important to have that feedback. This evening, what we will be doing during this portion of the agenda is I have asked our county attorney, Bob, to come forward and get us all a little bit more on the reach about what condition we needed. So this is our first round of doing a conditional voting hearing. So you are the public will also have a date of confirmation. After Bob does his presentation, Lori Ogley, our main town planner, is going to come forward and talk about some of the conditions, the changes that have been made to the application since our last meeting when we had the public hearing. And then the board will have the opportunity to ask questions. We've all been given all of the changes and been able to kind of develop some questions to ask the applicant. And then we will proceed from there. So Bob, take one.
Thank you, Mary. So what I'm wanting to do and talk about, making it better about that last thing for the public. If you want to talk very closely, you can't talk about it, but this little presentation would be helpful. I'm new to the county, but I have a second experience, especially with conditional zoning. The body's made a brand new form of town council in Elon, your very first case. So we talked a little bit about what conditional zoning is, the legal tool, the legal framework that general assembly has put around it. And then sort of go on such a kind of boost, I call it a boost engagement. What is permissible, what's not from this in terms of the way the council, it takes from both applicant as well as their petition expresses of the town of Elon. So conditional zoning is cool that really was first blessed by our courts about 20 years ago. Was not during the youth law of these in North Carolina, but for a couple of court appeals cases. Over the last 20 years, it has become one of the most predominant of the zoning in North Carolina. A lot of jurisdictions have painted it up as a tool, and it has been noted, it's ran during their income, you know, any experience that we've used it more and more. But I like to describe it as very flexible tool. There are sort of general district zoning where property is zoned in the district, the listing from the east is. And the owner of the property, developer of the property, can make use of anything that's permitted, subject to the rules of regulation applied to the end. But the rules and regulations are sort of general, and they're not specifically tailored to the developed side. The usual condition zoning is, as the word denotes, unconditional. So condition to standards that are preset for any use in the district. Both the developer, the council, and groups through a series of discussions, negotiations can build into the zoning rule to improve. You need specific conditions designed to address niches of the village. To the end of surrounding area, mitigate impact, address the concerns of the neighbors. So that's why it's called conditional zoning, allows great flexibility, which requires by-pending contracting of the rule of use. Now, it is done through what we call a legislative process, it's a long process. And you've heard about other processes, I'm sure, called place acquisition, which is sort of court-like. Where there's sworn caption, you need decision. Evidence presented through, that's not the case here. There was a public hearing, that council's decision is not limited to prevention of board at the public hearing. The state statute does require agri products and just a public hearing. Build that obligation to the. That is not the end of the process necessarily, it's the end of the formal public input before the town council. But importantly, for both residents, council, because it's life is primitive, it really does no limitation on the mayor's time to come to communication. So it's an open process. Even though the public hearing is closed, the neighbors can engage in conversation, negotiation with the applicant. Engage in conversation and communication with your elected officials, in any means that you choose, whether by telephone, email, written materials. But the whole end of the road is the story, we're willing to offer you that setting. But all of that is legally permissible. So again, the law provides an opportunity for a free-flowing discussion and forms of communication and a means of communication. I have seen councils private, I think they like to allow for this. There's no statute for legal deadline for time data by which the council has. So it's on your agenda tonight. At, I guess, on your agenda tonight, and you are going to vote, you are ready to choose, you are. No formal legal decision. Well, council believes that they were trying to get the information, the leadership, the mission, the law, or the intention of conversation to neighbors, the applicant. I've seen that process really need to be considered. Keep it out of the head. Uh, we don't need fire, the whole stroke, the doctor says, by, certainly by officials. Rests its, any servants with neighbors that can be addressed, still being out for, for the cloud. That's kind of my overview of conditional zoning, whatever it is, how it works. And what I have to say right now at this point in time, first and one, the whole public press people. Do, including anybody from the council or town council. About something really in your hands now. Decide how you want to speak. Certainly are free to ask questions if you have, receive additional presentations, you say, you ask questions. However, I can choose to.
Have the word you have on it.
Mayors, elections, council. Again, the topic on this case was on June 27th, 2022. As I've been carrying business of the former era on 2023, this is next to you, government revised conditions that the applicant proposed after the case was a new room or not applying. I believe those conditions were typed on a separate sheet that was included in your packet. However, I'd say ask the applicant to place those conditions on the site plan themselves. Those conditions start as number 13 on page 10, so if you have the look list, which I think most do, it's on page 10, if you have a large plan, it's on page D2. But the newer conditions do start on page 10, next. So very tiny. Those conditions are also listed on the screen in front of you. In the interest of time and in the interest of my points, I will not read through all of them. Plus, as I stated, they were already included in your previous hearing. I would like to bring out a couple of minor revisions that occurred since the public hearing. Specifically, the last condition was added that the applicant would provide two seat halls or tables for the street connections of Mossburg Drive and Old Town Drive, which are the two sub streets that lead into the table square neighborhood. On the development standards table, which is on page 14 in your booklet. The applicant has also proposed to increase the side yard setbacks for lots that are greater than 50 feet in width. And he's proposing to increase that side yard setback to five feet. So again, for lots that are greater than 50 feet width, there will now be a minimum of 10 feet in between the houses. For lots that are less than 50 feet, in which the proposed side yard setback would remain as it was initially proposed at three feet, which would allow six feet in between the houses. And I have it quite planned on the screen in front of you. And as we're talking about the setback changes, so it's kind of clear that lots that are greater than 50 feet in width, which I have in my laser, are the lots of the very northernmost portion of the project, allowing the keyless square subdivision. Also comes down the western side of the project. And then also in the southernmost corner of the project, those are also the lots that are greater than 50 feet. So again, the new side yard setback would impact those lots. I asked the developers to also amend all of the plans to reflect the correct maximum number of multifamily units there for two person. I think there was some discrepancy on some different sheets. The site plan and all the other materials were amended to state that they are proposing a maximum of 200 multifamily units. And those are all of the items that I wanted to mention to the board this evening. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
For whom we have a question of the applicant. We have in the morning here is by the orange, red, green, red and.
Yes, I believe, I hope that's the way this guy is taking effect. Because the memory chap, and if you're not an actual zone.
Yeah, correct.
I believe it's still in there from the old. That's for example.
Okay.
Those signs, yeah. Those conditions.
Okay. So just to clarify, so the yellow is the neighborhood residence. Does that have the traditional neighborhood development overlay on it?
It's a, the entire parcel has the T and V or.
Okay. So currently, without the overlay, let's just take the overlay off. The yellow section by rights can be used annual family detached from duplexes. A solar energy system or rental of a single room in a home. I'm looking at the LVO.
Yes, those are by rights, and then you have other by rights to the mission requirement also.
Okay, so that includes an amusement facility, manufactured home lot. Just trying to see, kind of very certain, essential services, you know, and all of the with requirements.
Yes.
Okay. And then. Sorry, there. Anybody? What page? Okay, so in the ability center of the district, so by rights, in the orange. Currently allowed extended practice, community facilities, excluding directional and waste management, commercial office use, forget how many designs within the civet building. And in your name, it's, it's going to be towards southern residential.
Of course, the government of the state and holders of the energy, so. And then there are also quite a few uses along by rights of the.
And then how does the traditional neighborhood overlay affect the current development or the current.
So the traditional neighborhood, you know, like everybody, and I was actually having this conversation today with Adrian, with Elon University and Elon's network. Just what's the difference? And our lights have brighter than our sense of ever going up to top office. Right. And it says that the traditional neighborhood development of the district provides an alternative to conventional large lot, single use subdivision. So this is an alternative to the large lot conventional subdivision. It encourages developments of neighborhoods with small lots, interconnected pedestrian, ordinary streets and sidewalks. A mixture of building types, building uses and public space. So there is not a minimum or maximum lot size where there are in your NR districts, in your DC districts. It's more broken down into a percentage of building types and building use. Go into the last page of P and D, or D and P, to require to provide 15 to 50% detached houses, 10 to 30% of contract houses, or multifamily, 50% for working. And five to ten, we're hoping. Now, going over the neighborhood residential, a fast feed which can be taken there.
Any questions about that before we, but.
I got a probably. Very much, hearing came up about. Conditions, what's the condition that plays? Obviously, but that particular development is staying. But that doesn't mean that your permanent port is that kind of portability to any other developments or any other.
They're permanent for that specific parcel. So if it weren't true, you would also adopt existing awardments that would run with that parcel. Even if that parcel were to be sold, it's based solely to a future developer. They would have to develop that site according to the site-specific plan with all the conditions that are agreed upon, which was more than that. And if someone wanted to come back and change something like, we don't like this, we want to add more single family or more multifamily, we want.
So there's no way that you can rescind it if a development decides to work out or something?
They can always petition, a resigning petition to revert back.
So if they want to be developed after a certain amount of time, they feel through this.
Well, I'm sure my general sketches, they're best to believe. And I'm not sure if our current LMAs, I've been reviewing our new LMAs, so I'm getting the language a little bit confused. But I think the board can, after that two years of no development, the board could petition.
That's correct. You can't make it automatically revert because that.
You can't make it automatically revert because that would in effect be another rezoning. So you have to go through the process if you want to change it. What the vested right provision protects against is they have two years, or even if you change your mind next month, they have two years to develop that plan. So they're protected against a council initiated rezoning for that time period. But you cannot put in a trigger that it automatically reverts if they don't develop within two years because that would be another rezoning that requires a public hearing.
I have one more question. When these changes that took place, were these because you were in negotiation with the developer? Or were these just all the developer?
So forgive me because I just started two weeks ago. But my understanding is that the initial conditions were offered by the developer, but it might have been from communication with staff and through the T R C, meaning the initial changes that came forth, the later ones came out of the pen where they might have reversed.
Any other questions? Okay.
One question, honestly. One of the things I got was the width of those lots. Do we have maybe twenty six?
Not that I am aware of. I did ask, I did ask the applicant about that because when I accepted the real on that. And we're trying to break that. It's not. So I asked for some visuals just for my benefit to go up right there to show me what a house looks like at. We do what I would normally, three foot side yard setback. I'll tell where is.
Are these pictures felt that it's the guy's done or if he's just a general?
You can draw that.
Some visual that you saw, and I think for some of the visuals, communities outward.
Yeah, it looks like two and a half story. Because there's a window.
You want that?
So you're doing it on. The nice unit.
I think with issue of firing, that's all continuing building code and fire marshals fire code. So whatever we decide we want, it's subject to five of those codes, regardless of what they want. So that's a different distinction, right?
And the plan that would come to us in the second portion of this process would kind of have that final determination. So when we actually see the plan, like I know we have like a preliminary plan with the design, but when it comes down to it, like.
It should be for you. The part of review process, it puts far line. So it's a whole lot of information on fire marshals.
Yeah, I think that with the recent fire, I think it was all more centered in.
Good people will have it up here, just driving around, some of the concerns that my apologies for not being here. What about ingress and exit?
Did you do the ladder? You got six foot space? So the rescue someone, the answer to that, it's more.
And I will say that we've been with the Chapel Hill Fire Department in my crew, Southern Village, and the distance between cars was not there. There were other things that we.
Do you have to look at the plans, how they are now? Do you see?
Can we go back to the. Right, I say while we. Because looking at the far right, the one that is. So there's no easy access to that, other than I guess, if that building is on fire, okay? Or there's other markets to be there. How do you expect that? Because right now we have to go all the way in, in an orange.
I think you.
Any more questions from the team? Bonnie, did you want to go next or Randy?
So I just. As I looked over this, we were talking, I think we talked last time about. Other thing I was really noticing was that there was special about the alleys. And was there some movement on that too, that you were making them quieter or? Putting out that I just wanted to make sure that I'm here to do with that. Yes, we talked about it in terms of women were prepared to follow the.
Even to that is important, even if somebody came through the other neighborhood. It was tight and theirs was, theirs were not.
So tell you, pushes in order to give that 1260 of these changes. Please, if you look on the plan. Twenty three of the space between that's more important to the space between that's a power saver. And that's why I was saying that all of that. There's, there's an opportunity and there's a lot of places I'm seeing that there are. So you can see that, you know, somebody did.
The trust of. But our ordinance is not well. For certain. Have a question for you.
Well, the catch garage was a lot of that this one. I remember hearing about this in the ground and you were saying that people were putting out stories. I didn't know if your designs had, Raj said the line first story. That's done.
Let me show this.
Maybe at the past garage, a little bit fire block. And I wanted to explain about one of the questions. You came up with your original conditions, always need to try and create something that you wanted to create. And so like for the business, business limitations or things like that, what is your kind of hope for what is pointing out?
See, another one that is called because. Involved in bringing in ambulance. This instance, I could see a smaller space there, it's a. It's a garage car. It's just that almost, it's a number of things that take some sort of patience. To. Like I read that you were saying, sounded like you were trying. You were. There was a kind of a. Those there and also few things there, you know, for the. So really.
What kind of question? Yeah, this is something that I think you took out. And this and we are. I just feel, feel the. Is that we want the intention to hear different price points as well so that, so that there is some affordable housing in this building as well? I think we're. By the point. But I just. Had to add to the. Like a lot of that. Are the. Next. That I've been talking about some theory.
Where does this place next day, where would you put on the plan of community?
The bones are shining. It's at the end of buildings, maybe you see that. In order to.
And I'll.
Will be something. And then. That would be.
Right.
So I thought you want very. Not it's. I mean, that's kind of what I was looking for. How would it? Where's like. And for the town and other people. And. I had an opportunity to see so good years ago. I was impressed with it being. The whole thing like. With the party on street. Well, I didn't tell you. Because that news was kind of concerned, but the greatest place here. We're saying there's no big part. Someone came visit these people. Where do they park? Going to the center street, seeing it's playing nine twelve. Populated. Yeah, straightforward. He's only here for. Square. So the people coming to. The streets and narrow streets and. We could get their comment. Well, things so village. They put up their board and said, and it appeared to be. But it's still some kind of property, maybe. So these departments. Maybe the southern village. Town council. Able to come out, so. Well, very. Sort of hot butter. She was like. I don't see. Sure. Yeah, these open areas. Take some way. This is a hard call because they're, they're in this power. Or the.
I'm not sure if he was the person to ask for. I was, as I was through all reading, I didn't understand that the road change. That's the second that depends on diversity had to be approved before you would. One of the processes that people wanted to.
Part of the process, D O T. You know, CIA has to have that plan approved, so that that's where basically the law, like, this new process. You have to approve or plan it. Respond to. That planning has to be to D O T. But is that a requirement of itself? Does it get approved, still? Element of. So we could. Why not? We'd have to put somewhere else or. The manner we can say. Well, we could do.
Okay, and that's what I was. And I thought that what I read, if you guys, if something. You know, I thought that, that if you are, if you're. P D O two parts, but I kind of being it.
Right away here on university. With controlled access. So you can't just. And when these properties were granted access, which they had a general idea where those access should be, but wasn't. The man to control access. Wow, because the approved plan should exactly where they're going. So they will have to go allow that. There's nothing there now, so it's not like they said it's coming out just that. Those are planned, it's where they are, so we have to go through the process. Now, this is an issue, that's like I said, when those were initially put in, they were meant for, well, in general. Our return. Yes, sir. They threw your best. And so right from doing. So the. And still not. And it looks like. We don't. Is it built? It's what they say. So we have to be available. Because like that one regulation. And it's like the chicken. Spurs. That shouldn't lead in. Fine. And using.
You guys get more. It's not.
So. Now, sure. Need to just.
And did you have any conversations with the Lazarine Church about? Okay, I know property to the left of the map.
They approached the meeting and had some questions about. Yes, agree with that way. So.
I'm not. If anybody's worked here, you want to know what we have here, it's small, but the regulations part. Won't be fine. Five hours. There's a. I was.
So there's some time to move. I don't know. That's it. All of the end of your public streets and that portion. Pretty long. People.
I'll think back on. Get far with the. Do we say? We got to find another. It doesn't require. From university. I'm explaining. What they say they can't, you know.
It's too much. You're getting away from. So before. That's what. So dispersing traffic. Which go out. Peel off the road. Not be able to go out, so depending that it disperses that traffic. Somebody wants to get either. They can choose which direction. So. If they. There's like. Five.
Hence what we were told about. Everyone knows. So it looks like that we have. It is. Has it been? What do you all foresee? Growth next? Obviously, we have. Concerned. And our. Wire. So what were you all seeing? What, what kind of traffic?
Show some process. And then. Showing. It's on the streets. That point. And we signed. No construction. And speaking. That's. Experience. There.
In addition to Jeff Warren, traffic is here. Looked at this. Part of the T I A. We didn't assign a lot of traffic. Maybe we assign ten percent of traffic. Because it's, it's. And. What I would anticipate is that once this is built. It's a little closer to get to university drive. And there might be some folks think opportunity to that. Not, we didn't assign that, didn't talk about that. That definitely be an option. If I did some numbers of. You know, twenty five percent of kids. Residents decided to go through this penalty and get the, is the one hundred. And that was. Traffic. When I was assigning the numbers, what I think is that a permanent percentage trips. And that's, that's approved by the. What I'm presenting is. So I assigned ten percent. Those numbers there. We look at during eight hours. Having eight hour. Rest of the. So.
Of course. Yes. There's right. Those form to the schools that would. Probably that. Nice.
No, we, we do by the outlines of what kind of. Just humanity. And they specify the P dollars is seven to nine area. And then four to sixteen year student traffic. When the school traffic is occurred, rest of P hour traffic is. So. A N S. V N S. Even in this. We do traffic counts. In the intersection.
And if a school bus was. They probably. Come down. Again, it's just your thoughts.
I would say that the school bus. Tigers, the school system takes. You know, boys. Because if not, we'd be turning left on. Then they probably plan to prove so that it just. I'm sure now I know other county systems have.
I agree. But the, but the idea that I'm speaking about was, are the school buses to be able to.
They would. Can't really speak.
Well, they wouldn't take. Well, they wouldn't take you on the road.
Yes.
Okay. I I was interested. That was. But what if? Boston wasn't a. I would get. They didn't want the traffic. Boston capable for moving out and uh.
You're not gonna get my. Engage my reading. So. If it was. It's gonna have.
Three. Cost. Up here. Three. Thirty. Down. Three. What what would happen?
As far as my study goes, it's pretty much. Because the the traffic that I assign. Um, looking at this going through Stone Gates, I didn't bring it up. I was getting. I have twenty trips. Twenty particular trips during the uh E M P hours. Going out and fifteen going in. A M P I had sixteen going out, sixteen going in. So. You know, we took away one of those entrances. Really enough for that. Twenty trips. Um. That's one. Cafe dollar. Between. Um, I did. We have a traffic count. And a challenge. That's it's not a lot of units. So. It would be good. And we have a journal, we sign a path. Now. So we never going out ten. Each out. We. So. The impact on. We wouldn't expect that much.
There would be. Something you have. Here. Uh, a. Auto.
It wouldn't affect T I. So T I A did not have lots of numbers each. Of traffic. So it's hard to see how. First. Um. And session going on. About where it makes sense to put aside a lot. There more Williamson. Or on um Charlotte Church. Or the university. Some combination there.
You're still. Are that. Where the shifts. Um, when says we've got a cross place.
They want also. Um. Pull my background on the corner city. Pedestrians. On the side. So. That's a big part of. Finding that pedestrian activity. Things. Traffic. Um. We need where we can get sound. And crossing. Being across university drive. People going across there. We can get stabilized. No. And actually sales pedestrian. That'll make so much safer. You just try to cross. When you look up and you see green. Um, someone else is trying. So that pedestrian phase at the time. Leaving pedestrian intervals where you get established in the crosswalk. Where the other faces change. Um. That is, that makes so much safer. As far as middle mid block crossing. If we have to. That can be signed. Obviously, it will be. Looks like a plan almost.
And the university.
They got us that are there. Could have. Solar powered L E D signs. And. Blink. And then there's a traffic flash. Being push apart. Being flashes. It's not a traffic signal. But almost everybody stops. If people don't stop. You know. Uh. And that caused amazing. Even with. Why you know, in the university. They have seventy. But it helps it helps establish pedestrian atmosphere. Where. And the sidewalks have David McBurney's also. Can't slow down. You stop. So. I personally, my background, I'm a fan of sidewalk. So to the question, obviously, years ago. There was a lot of concern. They were sure about. Something that's um. Could offer them a benefit. But they would have to do it. Who access that. Um. That's. She's that person. There is. There it is. I was. Specifically. But I guess the spirit of history. So if you use the western. Western margin. To visualize a crossing at the intersection. In the sidewalk that fronts university, Italian. There would be no sidewalk. Gone and northeast of eastern. Sidewalk would be stopped. So if you leave it, it's going to go with sidewalk side walk. Like almost anything. Being. Just more of that. I said, that was my question. Put a sidewalk. University. Square. Who, uh, they wanted to. And in specific to the concerns that we all have about where the sidewalk people. Using the bottom way. The routes that I walked instead. Even most positive. Even the Shar Center, the biologics itself, would be the sharps. You can walk right between getting the. That you directly to that patch of. By crossing the intersection, sign on the northeast, on northwest corner. And the whole. We're in the west. So that. Experience setting this. It's. Economically. Polar. The community very soon. The proper processes that talk about utilizing. So. A lot of these things that we talk. All. Gives everybody. What we can. Keep asking the question. I will add that. Seeing between the two major rules. On a. Citizen standpoint that must be isolated within the. I like the. The end of my. From the EMS. Integro. I want to be able to get to you as fast as I possibly can. If I'm still on the journey around the different part of. My work and. Same is true. Fire. If you. If I'm. Five hundred. So it's, it's. You can. Can or if you can. You can. Decide if they're not necessary. But what I would encourage you to do is not anything. Speed bumps are stored. They were good. Those. Speed bumps are designed to calm down in front of a grocery shop. Where you're expecting. If I'm going up baby street. Out of luck in the morning, I know it's bad speed, I would be there. Not to the person, not a much. If it's, if it's a short block, most of the blocks are. If there's a sign to keep traffic. But. You have a really hard. Going very good and two hundred foot block. Not. I can't. Somebody's going to push on you. I don't know. He. What I can do is decide, you know, the streets is two hundred four. That's what this plan. Kind of. So the idea of giving. Putting in time. Expected to sit. At a lower period. It's not necessarily. That's what. If you just, just.
Oh, um. Would you like? I definitely did. And the design of why the neighbors are always. So. You're super. Need to secure. This isn't anything new that you record. Um, but, but to find some of those numbers to. The drastic concerns. Um, of the neighbor. What can you say has been a whole person coming over there firmly not to them on the chairman. Um, that. Can reassure about the.
Most of the traffic just been a good. That's one of the entrances are set up. Uh, most of the traffic. One of the things that we did not take into account. Sidewalk. Sidewalk there makes it, makes it possible for people to walk inside. And gas prices tend to appear as well. So we can take a reduction in our trips. And assign those trips to people. But we didn't. Because we. Wanted to go in the worst case. Serving. Um, I would expect to see lower runners that book. And yeah. I think, I think if anything, it will be more convenient for people. Some. I'll call stone cables. To get to university drive by one true. It's going to be. So cute. Turns. Where it's there. So there should be some given tape. The, so first case, if everyone that we planned from. Development. Goes out, seven days. Twenty trips to one house. Sixteen. Coming. That's. That's not a lot of traffic. That's probably pretty tense.
What are the. Power. Sound like? If. Don't think. Everybody's. Um, this. It's very. I know this is highly hypothetical. Sure. Um, everybody that. Commercial business. But I mean, I think residential, you're right. Probably back in. Work. From a point, anyone's their home. I believe football's now creating and stuff, or trying to hang out at home. Um, but people, you know, being a destination, spots going to that. Do that restaurant. Um, how, how does that play in these some?
That's a great, great question. Um, what we do, we do a trip generation. And that's based on. Um, actually, set up. The transportation here puts out trip generation. You go through that. And we determine daily trips. And so that restaurant will generate a certain number of trips. Um, we, in fact, we looked at. Retail. Um. And retail, who makes of all of the strip retail, et cetera. Um, somewhere around. Three, three hundred trips per day. Most of those are going to come out of the university. Um, how do you get there? They see it. From the side of the road. They pay. Interest. Most of the clientele, I have more opinion for a restaurant. Not going to know about the creation of. They're, they're not being. Any. So I would expect. Almost all. Retail, traffic. Area. Won't make use of this. Very well. So I would expect any. That's. People. That. That's. Smarts. In. See a restaurant. Looking up on. We won't actually take. That's what I would expect.
It's not like the. Commercial spaces. Of earlier. Can be all possible, possible. This. Also. It's. It's not like you are. All the.
Right, what I would have. Us. Passages. We actually use, we allow a good team to use a little bit of reduction to help internal capture. That means that a trip stayed on the property. And still an internal trip. Stays on the property. And that's if somebody lives there, her. Or they drive, but they don't leave. They go out. So I would, I would say that. You would be entirely losing more than ten percent of the trips generated. Those could be. We don't know what. I would expect. And a sidewalk. That's. That's. And I'm not sure if you all have. Sidewalk.
I mean, again, it's not. The one block.
Sure. But out here, that's sidewalk. It's, uh, that, that makes even five. Bottom back riders. Um. Red. Track. Setting for some part of the track. Um. And then. God, it's not obvious, I'm going to be. So. Makes it even, even more. Track. Sidewalk. Yeah, I know. Because I, I teach at community college.
Um, there's a question that I have this, uh, discussed. Uh, I'm. Five, two hundreds, below five hundred. Because people are usually worried about property values, but. I want to, I want to. Here we might have cost, so I don't know if that. Um, looking at those prices, is that something like to see if we're on? This is being high end. Um. Presidential area.
Yes, I would say it's. It's a more efficient. Person. This is a very. So. Been. Forty five. Uh, this. Yes. The very. Slimes. Of life. Is this a pleasant time? Should be called. Um. Shortage. They can hear a foot pedal on rush. They had changed. Just over there. I got it there and it's. It's. Whatever else. I want to have. But. Yes. It's.
Yeah. And I'm happy to be under if the U S.
Would like to be.
Just that will be everything.
Or is it? I would say the smaller, the smaller box. Small. I'll be. Over. Any questions?
Um. I'm so like, I'm sorry, we can stand up and sit back down. You are not. You might get tired. Um. I've done a lot of. Things, so I have a lot. Um. Clint told me, what did you call me today? The novelist. Um. So just for everyone, for reference, so I mentioned that. The chief and the president, the chief of power department and I, we, we went to Chapel Hill. We call Warrior Chapel. We also call. Seven Village. We got out of the truck. We walked around, we talked to families, we talked to. Um, a gentleman, um, who's quite big from Virginia to Chapel Hill. Um, talked to another gentleman who first owned a townhome. Has a neighborhood and loved the neighborhood so much that he's been bought with his family. Neighborhood. Um, we talked to a family. Um. Such that the man in the hubble of the children, fighting in the little park area and that. We don't live there. We think it like it. And, you know, they said they absolutely love the path, the children go out to the. Creek. Play and they sitting back there. Um, so, you know, that was all great. And, you know, I think awesome. I was also very impressed with. Um, again, I don't know if it's in builder, like, is it? Jeremy, is it the same type of building better or. Or?
So it's very, it's very sad word to say. You look at.
We actually. Through the neighborhood.
So.
So we follow the brand new one. Like the back. Um.
If there's, if there's numerous builders. And I was. One of these.
And so, you know, I can't speak to what these things are going to look like, but I was very impressed with. The look. For me, it's hard to like take my personal preference. Like, when you have the last meeting, like, I don't want to live that much time. Um, I actually, I would be thought about this and I knew that. The residents of Cable Square were opposing it. My first thought was like. They're already on all lots. And then, so I actually. Went through somewhere. And I wrote down the lot size of every lot. In Cable Square. These times. Lots are all smaller. So I do have a concern about that. Because it is very small. Uh, and I. So it's just problematic in my mind that. The lots are so small. So originally, the proposal did talk about duplex. And the duplexes at Cable Square, um, they sit on thirty six. Hundred. They sit on thirty eight hundred square foot wide. Um, which is. Larger than what you're perfecting for. You know, even a single family home. So why did you make the decision to not have any duplexes? In this neighborhood?
I think. I may have. Turned on this, but I think. Transitioning here is the two legs. They were. Perceived. One. Through time. Keep in mind, some of the setbacks that. Spirits got are very similar or in some instances are more respective than that. From ten foot front, we have a three foot side rear. Precisionly structures. Just one point to. So, um. Keep in mind that you're transitioning from north to south. One towards this intersection, which would logically suggest. Transitioning. So it's just. I mean. You know. I'm hoping to do. Really well received. This group. And this, this. That is. It's been a little while.
Um. So going, as you mentioned. So currently, the L B O standard says that the minimum street. So that's from the street to the front of the home, is that what you're talking about?
From the.
From the right and fly. To the front of the.
The. And if you. You get the third position. There's a tree. Sidewalk. And you're. Right in front of property. So then that's. There. Back in. There's. Twelve.
Okay. And then, so eventually, building standards. You requested. They're not a. It's potentially like the front porch steps are coming down onto the sidewalk.
Well. In the building center district, the commercial. I think on the right. Just like. Process.
Right.
That building is appropriate for. That zero set. So the single family panel. So defining the single family. To sound home.
Okay. Is there a way that we could put that in there, like similar to what you did in the side minimum where you said? Maybe you put in there like the primary street minimum in the village center, you would say. Be ready for retail commercial and then whatever you're asking for a minimum, just to kind of there are that. Um. Rear minimum, same thing. You're asking for zero in the village center. And I would, I'm gonna how? How, how does that work? How does the viewer that in the rear work? Because I feel like you're gonna have to have the ability to like a truck to come in and deliver good.
Well, it is, what is based on the plan that you see here, really the package period numbers that are close to. Um, the way the buildings are laid out. So it's kind of hard to determine setback on those lines, but those buildings, and they're intended to be up on street. So they have that, you're creating that best use case where there's where people feel comfortable walking down the street inside. You got a parked car, you got twelve to fifteen feet of sidewalk, you got. Two hundred and benches, trees, like that, those, all those things. That leads you up to the right of the. Where you're doing. From the front and those uh the corners. Or set back. The corner could be zero as well, so. I don't find the street. Yes. These are what you're saying to. Well, no, they were in the back where they uh pull up. And that was, I was a little comments there. In your city, make sure that. Six feet. Um, what are that's going on?
So there goes twenty six. Feet. So really. Or I just not listening.
See, there's a lot of lines. It's from the back. Creating where, where is that real lot? Doesn't have to be zero. In the word five, there's none of those buildings, commercial buildings are all. Um, you're set. Good. Pretty yes. But they're all providing the streets. Um, just in the street like. Parking located outside. Central leaders. And other setbacks.
Okay, my next question is around the, I wanted to do that. Um, I noticed in the alleyway and the other neighborhood was related to the ability to pull in to. What I guess is supposed to be a driveway behind the garage. So in the neighborhood residential district, we have in our L B O standard that it has to be fifteen feet from alley garage to pavement. You're asking for ten. I guess my concern with that is you're not gonna be able to put your car in. Like. You know.
Right.
Faking your garage, so someone to what was all there is that people are parallel parking in front of their garages. And as we know, a lot of people don't use their garage for vehicles, so if they have two cars. And can't put one in the garage, which I think is. Their problem, but I'm like. What do we do then? Because ten feet doesn't seem long enough. Or is that what people?
So the first line of defense is the age of right, it's gonna be really restricted, so it's a bylaws that there is a going to be an apartment. That's all. Most of these values are, I think Raleigh is an example. In their um. Requires for setbacks, it's on Alex. There is either five feet or twenty feet. And so the five foot setback is really throwing any possibility whatsoever in trying. So they make it smaller. Or it's gotta be twenty feet so that you can't park a car outside. So. Maybe, maybe the key to do is make five feet. You can't park that, you only twenty feet so that you change. To get the traffic.
Yeah, and I was, that was one of the things that I was wondering about, is this a, this a bit too. And. What do we want? I'll hold it up. So this, uh. So this is if you include single family. Sorry, like I think of us, but the ability, so if all of them will have eighteen feet, but they are.
A little bit of. It took one of the units from. People that. Have been installed into the, since we're practical program. Actual. You know, if it's, they need to try to. That they make together lots of everything. So that's what that lot is looking like. You need to back which with a house or two, I don't know. Product space.
So the ten for the town having stuff back up all the town in fact, I was agreeing. Um. Are they gonna run the same level of current? Is there, I have the question, is in their garage?
So so the ten for that usual rather than with the new question, how many two bar garage? Two, two bar apartment. Twenty two foot panel. It's a one car garage, it's one car apartment. So it's one garage and one part. But the other, the other two products.
It's part of the town, I want.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say anything to that. Groundway, groundway. It is in the, the larger configuration. Uh. Yes, that would share you with. Killing part of the apartment or the driveway.
So raising that question about the large and being. Part of the house, is that maybe the town where the garage is at the bottom level? Just in the back and then the front is like, okay.
So you've got your front, so behind you. Your small family, you know, you walk right, you want to, I don't know. Back, you wanna have. You control the lot. Places that know. The driveway. Parking driveway or the parking lot. Kind of. Or the tractor or put up or. Probably could be. Still use. H V C units and that kind of thing, put all that stuff in the back. Cleanse up the street state side, looking at houses.
And it does, it definitely does, you know, I hadn't really think about it and I've shared with the board and I don't know if. I've shared my comment, but um in my hometown, you know, the houses that were built in the early nineteen hundreds are this thing concept where the. Stuff come down to the sidewalk, you know, the very place to the road. Um, but there's an alleyway behind, you know, the parking and it certainly did. To not have all the vehicles out in front. Um, but I think I had to. Get to understand that concept.
Yeah, I've gone. We've seen it. Are they, they probably have all sorts of things that's. Also there won't be traffic. You know, the picture of. They're gonna have some streets and they're gonna have some. Oh, they also have alleys, alleys are trash, so I can pictures. What the alley was like in trash. Versus the front. And the opposite building opposite on the front of the apartment. It's so clean. Just that, let's go to details. That make up community lives. And then in the left part, we're not really. Probably creating, you know. Was it down that back end in the twenty thirties? Just to tell anybody. Here, here. Well, they're just. They, they're like in that far. The building's just dead. But also. It is. That's great. But we found in the field. Yeah, so.
And then another question I had is that in the village center, the standard, the L B O standard is for six thousand square feet. Of what, of the workplace building, I'm assuming that that. What is the difference? And I kinda have a worry there too, what's the difference between workplace building versus? Is that the retail commercial place?
I think by. Workplace building is more of a single use. By. That it's all one, one. Not in purple shit. Then we get at all subjects for him. You always have. Think that's more dangerous for single use for more.
Is defined in the L B O. Um, really quick, I'll try to be loud, workplace building may either have a single or multiple uses or tenants. Office, industrial and commercial tenants are typical. Small towns and mill villages throughout North Carolina provide examples of how workplace buildings can reasonably coexist with other nearby building types. Sorry, I didn't have that.
So this makes these buildings is technically a workplace building? By your own.
Um, so it could be single or multi-use. Um, either one, so it could be like a, which I think we do have a lit work as a separate um category. Um, but it could be a single use or a multiple use, so it could be um commercial with uh multi-family above.
Okay, so I guess my confusion is, is that in the, in the development center, the non-residential. I guess S F is square feet. So one, one is saying a hundred thousand square feet max, but then on the next line it says workplace building one hundred thousand square feet. That's not two hundred thousand square feet. Um, but then my other question is. Do these buildings really? Like for a hundred thousand square feet? Or are you just asking for a whole lot over?
So. So just take, any of the three, they average about twenty two thousand per feet in the footprint. So the red you see is twenty two thousand plus or minus fourteen, four stories, that's. Three stories, seventy five.
Okay.
So what you see, one, two and three, red, will be twenty to twenty three thousand square feet. Over there. Or four.
Okay.
When you start stacking all that up. It's just shot a hundred thousand square feet. Range is twenty two thousand, twenty three thousand plus minus.
Okay. And then in terms of the two hundred apartment max, there was some confusion about what the number actually was, so. Do you have an idea of how many actual apartments you plan to put in three buildings and what is the configuration of that?
So the next one is to. Fusion before was, they were, all the units were listed and sorted together. In that, at Holland. They're not assuming that that two hundred people number was apartments. That was two hundred apartments plus the other units that I think that. District. Simple clarify. They have. Not two hundred, two hundred apartments. Six. Fifty one. Eight and then there's. Home, it also remain that district, so. It's a, it's a, it's a.
So those people family have at the top right, which to the left of the blue square. Those are actually in that village center district or then they're actually?
Many uh, Austin, 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 coming straight down to university. I'm uh. A C B student.
Okay. I don't know what I have here. So when you develop the property, Jeremy, do you, do you establish the HOA guideline or is like, how, how does that work? If I'm not sure how it works to initiate.
So, so what the process works is. We're comfortable with the site plan and destruction, draw lanes, what you. More than likely being around forty break. How many releases is probably one, two, about third each way company. Um. There were a couple of time sets that had different spaces, they, they are ventures, the whole of our. Hooker. Business, baby, they would help us create, but they didn't have a budget and um. Make sure they were properly funded. They're returning Charlotte. Or. Special. Next resuscitation, several sub-associations, so we're always controlling that. Or the line way, the dock is gonna be. We do. This is what I'm. This is this. Perspiration product. Here. Then you get multiple layers and services. It's all. So you could. Or pardon the deep industry.
Hi. So I know that there's some concerns around, you know, student housing, trash. Um, obviously we have, you know, performances that can help with trash, but would the HOA also? Be dealing with that, like in the commercial space, would they go receive a commercial space and manage that or would manage that?
My opinion would be. It's a, it's a stock. It's not, I don't know why I see something that's not good, so more than likely be one brown. And um the fines and the penalties. This is.
So you would perceive that maybe can solve for some of the issues that could come along with youthful residence. Um, I know that we cannot look at this as a condition, but. For me, I would highly recommend that you look at the opportunity to where someone does need to live and reside in the property. Before renting it, I think we talked about for two years, again, I don't think we're allowed to make that any form of condition, but that's my recommendation. My other recommendation is that we have confirmed that we believe you can say that there is no undergraduate student housing. Obviously, that changes your economic level in project, but I do think that you're going to have. Happier residence in your single family homes. If you do go with that, so I just think that's something that you should look at, again, we can't make that. Condition, you can't make great waterment, but I do think that. It is worthwhile to at least consider, because I, I live in a large neighborhood. Core lots down from me have now cracked into, you know, rental properties. And I'm here telling Rich every day, I walk by there every day, hey, this is happening, not this property, they're filling on and that's what you're going to have. It, it does become heavily student housing.
What I promise you is, this is gonna be able to be like. Um. And some of it's, some of it. He just wanted to have party balls and. And get a lot. Honestly, I'm worried, there is. We write this. Hold the day and happy. But keep in mind, we're, we're, whoever does live here will find it. They're unable to know what they're. So they're just. I'll.
Yeah.
They got a turn. I'll see. There's um. Buying the five hundred thousand dollar house, but they're.
They don't buy two ninety.
But they will, and they.
But they will, and they, they, townhomes, something like that.
The decision is made.
So at least on the zoning side, and I'm not familiar enough, I've started learning your regulations. I'm not familiar with what comes after this decision. But on the decision, the issue before you, which is whether to rezone it as conditional district, and if so, what conditions to include. Once you've made that decision, that establishes the legislative framework for the project. The law now is set, and they are entitled to develop. Consistent with the conditions that have been placed that they have agreed to.
The plan will come on board, Lori?
Yes, so hypothetically, if this conditional resign were approved, their next step would be a major development plan, which would come back through the process of planning board on any town council.
A major development plan is under a qualified judicial hearing?
No, legislative. And it's basically a commercial site plan, or not commercial, a site plan. So it'd be more detailed, including part two.
So we're both new.
Yes.
You know better than I do. I want to put a caveat or qualification on first statement that that's legislative. I want to look into that. Because this clearly is legislative. Normally, development approvals after that are either place adjudicial, or what's called administrative or ministerial. And it's more of a check the box type thing where the decision maker has less discretion.
Yes, boss. Typically, I've never seen a commercial site plan go back to town council. This is the first jurisdiction that I've worked in that this process, a major development plan is occurring. But my understanding, please confirm, that it is legislative, and it's just more technical, more detailed information on the site plan.
We'll confirm if you are more definitive answer.
Sorry, I apologize again. But like, if we made a decision, and I, then something you'd like to speak on, that altered or changed, or is that in here as a business plan?
So again, I'd like to study the language of your ordinance, but I'm pretty sure there is a provision. Most state law does allow for ordinances to have minor deviations on a conditional plan to staff proof.
Yes, I know it's in here, I'm just not as familiar as well.
So that might be considered to be, and that's sort of discretionary with your zoning people.
That's what I was trying to say.
Even if they have discretion to approve a minor deviation, they can take it new.
Thank you very much.
One question?
Is it new a lot of statements? I'm confused when you're going along through this process that. But I don't follow tradition, like, rather than forge down here and people. More faculty people, or more faculty developers, or so. Do you have to see this one? I'm sorry. It's kind of a wild way. In terms of our citizens, something, whatever. You can't speak this, everybody says it's wrong. On another thing with me, because we want, we want to keep it that way. Really, if you're trying to work through it, that's it. Or if I was a lot, and we're like, it's a lot, that's more, I don't know how that works. I guess, but my question would be, is, will say this board of, will say, uh, what's the say at the next offer, probably could be the same. That, fair statement. Um, thanks on what's going on with the head goes out. Several other things you got to consider. Something like you said, I believe only three quarters of my effort. They give more, said, reasonable. And that's my life, my life. Infrastructure costs, pipe, asphalt, all that has, late times on this stuff is only, some of it is up there to you. Just get the pipe, get rid of the rest of the face. So you can, dealing with all these non-handits. Boy, very good with life time, it's changed from, it is, that's why change for installation and violations. That before building last year. Something infrastructure program that supports all school, all order, all roads, and pretty sidewalk, support that, support that function. And you lost a lot of people that love to live here in Boston.
All I had one thing that, um, me with the university on radio races, different folks, one of the current things that comes up in our conversation, trying to find again, is inability of employees, now that's staff, staff, you know, of the nation. They can't afford to live close to the university. They can't afford to live in Elon. Because we don't have a, we don't have a wide choice in housing prices. And when we do have houses on market, they're on the market very well. They aren't paying yet. So, just to, you know, add to what Jerry's talking about is that, the price of housing, and, I know every time somebody hears the affordable housing, you know, they think in one area. What? And that is a type of affordable housing. We're talking, I think, Jerry's on it, you know, our police officers, our teachers, folks who work at the university, folks who commute, you know, to other towns. Five thousand new jobs coming to London in the next several years. Folks in the needed places to live. And, you know, that's, that's a real issue right now, in this army and state body. There are just not enough homes for the people who like to live here, and a lot of them, they can't afford.
I'm not going to be a part of that, because I don't know what they know, but I've worked at Elon University, and I'm probably the only one within, except for one other person within my department, twenty-four people that I've been living in. So, but I've been here for twenty years, so I've gotten, getting good. But, so yeah, it is a real problem.
My, so, from our land, from fifty-one point three, there were a hundred and ninety-nine of our residents who actually worked. So, I mean, very small, of how many people live in our there. And then, envision Elon, and final then projects that our population will be eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven by twenty-four. Seems to say how accurate that is, but, you know.
Thinking about numbers, and I don't know if we have, if we have, but, um, you know, most of us know that we have too many land in the university, um, Elon, that are not pockets, so we're not getting corporate taxes from them. And so, you know, one thing that corporate tax is, it's not a base, it's not a base, we don't, we just don't have it. Rely on sales tax, and, um, you know, how much would this add to the proper tax dollars that have been being invested into Elon as a community, or our infrastructure, for the neighborhoods, to behold, the town as a whole. I don't know what type of numbers, somebody's quite close or not, but that, that would be a big thing to know, how much this would add to our bottom line on a different basis.
I, I don't know what the investment is. I don't know what's the total value, total value that it's seeing.
Those numbers, it seems to say it's probably Big Will and Runaway. And that, and construction, land, seats and rigs. Big Will would be playing.
I think we all have that.
Two hundred, if they sold for two fifty.
Sorry, I was trying to make a major math.
No, I actually spent an afternoon asking that, not the guy.
If they had a hundred million dollars, they'd get about seventy percent of the current value of Elon. So not even significant change for a whole value.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the help, Lori, you stayed today. I asked you to think as well, and I appreciate the people who reached out to us and shared their concern. I think that they're valid. About if we put that, he is a board, and talked for years, more for us, he's part of the town, he got the seed developments. They have been developments we've thought about five years, seven years. And I appreciate the promise he should have. Most concerns that I've heard, those people concerned about, that this, and what it really gives, some of those things. Putting people in a smaller area brings, thanks this. People have chores, they're bodyguarding. And obviously, climate situation, well. They can get injured to global migrations. That's what's in the town, we, you know. It's there. What we don't want is to take away from the other property around. Other cable squares, great communities. It can do a lot of reiteration before it actually can be. Didn't start, it didn't, didn't wait, started, so, as a, the town, we have to get out. I don't want to do that with this, I want to make sure, we set conditions, those conditions are the ones that's in this program. Just like we call it tax, the last thing we want, we respond, is another liability, that we don't have interest for the staff, supporting. And that's what we need, this, I have a part of this, this, versus partners, something we need to think about. Who would I say, if you see anyone that go, all play, the one, show. For whatever reason, that was a lost opportunity. So I think if we want, the rest is going to happen, it's just, we'll have to help, shit. And I think, I think we're making a lot of progress. I appreciate everyone, if you're looking, thank you. Want to just be successful, you want the, or a legacy, your team providing a great product to our communities. And I think this will be, it may not be like you said, it may be usual, but there are going to be people who will help them, like the way they have you.
I thought, I thought, they've actually much, it's the way you know your neighbor. I've actually, and then I thought, well, first time ever, what was the town name? So it would have been nice to not have to share it with all of our neighbors. Yeah, so essentially, a deep hat, out there. And then also fell down the fact that I think, like, if I, me, to pay someone to go by brass, or a market, go over there now, probably not. One more time, I have to tell you, so.
Still like, this is like, there's still this, it's a, it's a, it's a, something that I heard, it's crazy, I still like, we've had a really good discussion. I just don't know, I wanted to jump ahead, say, we're ready, I think we need a little bit more time, we think we're ready. On this, a really good part, um, thank you for saying you don't, but we, we will, and we want to, because you have an element. I know, we, we talk about these types of things, we, we ask them, so we need to be very serious about, about, but I really feel like we're really close to the fire. I have to, please have a fire.
So, if there's no other question, argument, objection, too?
I don't know if you want to set an actual thing, oh, you want to say, um, just discuss amongst us.
And then we're, then we're not compelled to do anything out of this, out of discussion and making decisions.
I, I think it's not worth it.
I have to say, so usually, when a lot of the time, not far, people during the time period, it's paid or whatever, you know, he was, there was conversations that. That still happens, community still happens, so, and the ways that we normally want.
Moving on to new business, um, these are two items that we did with Seth at the last meeting.
Sure, um, you only changed what you have two weeks ago, where she put the map. To see where those parts are located. But okay, that block with sixty-nine, or that two-three-seven. Loop Road is the access, one of the lots, extends into floodway. You can use the buffalo. There's a second lot, which is up at the highway, the bridge over the stream, that's actually, again, the floodway. And then the third lot is adjacent to all of the, now we want to start running. So there, there's our three problematic blocks, we respect two elements. It's conceivable, one of them might have some value, but by and large, that would have a whole lot of value to that. And the last four ninety mil on that attachment is a portion of our bicycle bike that lives on it. And up the top of the page, you can see the red box, which is where the these.
Was it a thirty-foot range bridge?
Uh, actually, the fourth one. And how the sort of proposed facilities, up the top of the page, you see that red box. That's just, that's just where the, the, potential used at. And those three lots follow along that green line.
The green line is depicted.
It doesn't exist today, it hardly exists today. You just possibly would hang yourself that. Could be ours, and it could be developers, as they come in, you know, portions of it across their property line. Working with landlords.
You don't proceed this way.
I mean, you can take this, each team's, it's not, it's not, you know. I'm not going to worry about, I mean, as a side question, but I noticed, like, if.
It follows the electric wall, right?
No, there was nothing in there.
Yeah, I mean, right now, with the, the, um, North Williamson, shows that there's an access to the North Williamson, across the university, going up, you know, and also you have the Starstone Gable. There's starting off with the Big Stone Gable, the green line follows the, the utility corridor.
Hey Diane, I can all see you.
I had a lot of problems, it's great, it's beating, but, just like we saw with our neighbors doing, but, don't, I'm just, um. Should we do more, honestly, see if there's any issues there? Underground tanks, was there a well in there, or what?
Uh, I would say, I would say about two of them, very unlikely. One sits in the channel. I would, I would say there's no chance of it going. Other one sits right along the bank.
But you only got a long number, but you're saying three lots. So let me back the first slide, you're saying each one is each a part of them?
Yeah, each, each page is a separate parcel. So the first parcel, that one-one-seven-four-two-nine, that runs on Loop Road. I don't know, I haven't seen, yes, there's ever anything in there. We can. I mean, we could certainly go to check that better, if you like. The second slide is that one that is entirely through the street channel area, floodway, and, I'm saying, almost zero chance that it's ever going to go up. Up there. And the third lot is adjacent to that, a little slade of the lot, and then floodway. I would doubt anyone there, probably, certainly. No, two of us. I mean, these both give us frontage on eighty-seven, which is, you know, some directly, we go with the P O T, and we need to, there's some sort of a, whether it's an extended shoulder, or a separate pipe, something like that, across over there. Yeah, we did a phrase warning study on the parcel on Haguen, we purchased the, um, for future police station, um.
I mean, we're not planning to develop this, I only thought that it can, the extra rent, and I have potential to. Yeah, I mean, and there's a, the next plan on eighty-seven, which is going to potentially allow for us to have a discussion from a point about a long agreement. The agreement we have now, is that if you can have land on eighty-seven, if you don't buy, those things are more than worth.
That, that would be a, a strategic benefit to the town, yes.
My opinion, it's not worth a spin, if you're made a loan, that, you may not, that would be.
Yeah, it was the, the police department, probably about eighteen hundred dollars to that thirty-one dollars. So, that was acre, we've got a couple acres up there, probably a little bit more than that, to be researching.
Has any staff ever been involved in, to see if it's on, a waste plan?
Um, I, I'm not sure, I suspect Hamman, way back when. This, this discussion with the base has been going on for nine, ten months like that.
I mean, I doubt.
Yeah, we, again, we can certainly go out and take a look at it ourselves, you know, I can go out, Lori and I can go out, whatever, and take a look at it. To, certainly going to be pretty wet. Not this time. And the third one, I believe there's a bit of a slope at the back, the docks down the road, it's tranquil.
I mean.
That's fine.
I would like to possess the property, just don't take it, aside and say. I'm afraid it's, as we're taking possession of this property, and everyone looks at that property, and it's going to be a sign out there. There's going to be no one that's going to be looking at that property, so if someone does something, they dump something on that property, but we're not policing. Our patrol force, I don't know, see what I can do with that.
Yeah, it'd be like the seventy-four year olds we have on our knees, same way. We don't, we don't toll that, if we did. Probably nobody.
I think it's the right thing to accept it, I just, I just want to make sure, we have, we go out, we go out, we have a variety of issues, so, you know, the works for anybody. There has a problem.
And you're saying once you can continue it for a month, you just do, you know, I don't think, personally, it's paying money, not out there.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, just sell a couple of bases, get off the property, and come back and say, hey, it's time. Probably, but unlikely enough, because you don't have any issues with buying or going there. Taking a look at it.
It's like hidden treasure.
So how will you proceed to do that? We proceed by accepting it tonight, Lori, to accept. So how will you proceed to do that? We proceed by, um, accepting it tonight, or we could accept it?
Yeah.
Uh, can I have a clarification of who seconded that?
Okay, thank you. Went too fast. Thank you.
Well, I consider some of the, this is a day to correct the date, and maybe then, um, one of the, um, the August twenty-third.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, stuff with doing it hard, you know, but we had nine. How's the number who has been in surgery scheduled?
So we're not.
You can just, there was, oh, you really don't know. Um, but, uh, can I hold on a second?
Yeah, wait, will I still have on there?
Legislative process, I thought you could.
So, um, I read yesterday that the governor intends to lift the state of emergency on August fifteenth. Um, but if you're going to do it under the, before then, um, under the legislation, did you guys operate under that legislation at all? You didn't vote?
Yeah.
Okay, there are certain things we need to comply with, um, in terms of notice and, but you can do it as a remote meeting, which will allow, um, councilmen to participate remotely and vote.
Be tuned in that morning.
So, there, um, as you think about this, and I think with the consideration, when we cancel the August meeting, what happens if you're not ready to vote on the conditional zoning, um, you could always continue meeting, and you could continue it to that August date if you wanted to, even if you've already canceled the regular meeting.
I mean, we don't, I've said before, we don't need to vote on cancellation. We only have to give a two, two week notice of cancellation.
It, it, it's a workshop. And it's a work session.
It's a regular meeting.
It's not a.
It's not a regular meeting.
Well, no, under the open meetings law, it's considered a regular meeting, regardless of what you call it, it's on your regular meeting schedule. There, there is no statutorily required procedure for canceling a meeting. I, I've seen where a board just decides to say, cancel it, and then nobody shows up, so it never happens, right? Um, but for the public's benefit, the best way is, best practice is to vote to cancel it. I also point out, you have the July meeting, when you can make the decision about August.
Why would we, why would we care?
Because there's nothing, I'm afraid, on the agenda, but I think there would be.
For August, I think we.
You're on.
I'm on vacation.
I'm going to go that day.
That's the day.
I'm going to go that day. So, the ceremony is for Wednesday, right Diane?
She's present. What's the question?
The ceremony is on Wednesday in Asheville, correct?
Yes, the, the swearing in, yes.
So, I mean, but the town board and the town manager are not going to be here on Monday, this one, so that will probably be.
I mean, I'm going to be out of town, I'll probably find someone to point us, the service manager on out. I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, do you guys, if you want to do it.
When we cancel meetings, or if something urgent comes up, we all, we, we have.
Especially.
Meeting, so I, I would say, we'll get, take, based on the circumstances, we'll get cancel that meeting, and then we can need a special meeting.
All right, I have made a motion, on favor, may I, any of that, motion therapy?
Hmm, very briefly. Uh, just to remind everybody who, uh, may be listening out there or here, uh, to check out the town's calendar. Looks like on the community, yeah, our community tab, uh, has a good estimate on events that are coming up. Including a wide range of recreational activities, about one slave park and that cute park. Uh, Friday, the twenty-second, or twenty-second, part of our movie on the line soon. Fridays, yeah, summer, uh, movie is, on the twenty-second, it's Crisella, it's about thirty-ish, based on sunset. Free popcorn, free drinks. Uh, Pineboard is not going to be immediate on the twenty-nineteenth. And just as a reminder, this coming Thursday, as all Thursdays are in the summer, is Farmers Market Day, that's for local farmers.
Thank you. Start with Randy.
I just wanted to, um, the law was not getting, I mean, just have a go on the terrible accident. And the lies of the people. And, uh, many of them, though they're not writing people on there, no, by any of us, just want us to, um, be mindful of that tragic situation. I would also say that, um, that the, it was very interesting going through the transition with the, uh, chance. Um, in my neighborhood, it's.
You say it like it's over.
It's not probably over yet. So I'm just, um, thankful that you all, playing chief track with that. And as I part, I got it. Very certain, if I can, I would, I would.
I don't have anything to do with it, but, man, if you want to keep your streak alive, I'll come up here and do with you. I appreciate all the work that you have been doing for us. I'm glad we could try and see it soon, because August is, uh, I see more of it as you, probably, hopefully, some of these people coming on well. Yeah, a good turnout tonight, and I really, uh, all was a good job. Really appreciate it, and we have asked more questions. Very, very, especially you all, and really, I'm just glad to see. I would love all of it.
Good night, boys, good evening, morning.
Yeah, I want to echo everybody's game, like, you know, it's tough, it's tough to be. Um, but, I think, Sam, I, I really want to thank Chief Massey and, uh, the mayor's, or, uh, going out and doing, uh, protest. Taking that initiative, well, made a lot of work, so, notes, I have that in slide. I've called, dude, amongst you guys, we're doing some type of text form or calling form. Um, and I appreciate that, I think that's how we, as the board, do things, right? I think that's how we, we govern a town, probably, um, we are the board, we, we govern it. Um, I really like that, I just, I was just working, and, uh, other than that, that is, so I'm all, I'm scared, but I always.
Just to clarify, have individual fellow conversations.
That group text message.
Um, I was just.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I, I really enjoyed the time with Chief Massey and Chief Walker, and, um, riding along, and, you know, hearing from the tribal technical fire department, and, um, their, um, into that nature. Um, so, yeah, I'm not going to, I'm screaming anything out, because we don't really like, and I'm, I'm like.
I would like to add one other thing, Diane's back in the office tomorrow. She hasn't missed much of a beat, being out, uh, the last two weeks.
All right, welcome back. All right, with Diane, do I have a question for you?
But you have a lot of, I think, you're in the division, um.